Good morning, everyone, and thank you for attending. We are here for our Board of Commissioners meeting for July 18th. And we'll begin as is customary with the moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for your pledge to the flag.
My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have now time for a public comment. Anybody here? Proceed with the adoption of our minutes from our July 3 meeting and our workshop of June 10.
All the commotions in those minutes as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those minutes. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved. Mrs. Newlin, you're up.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. We had receipts on July the 16th and 17th of $1,409,469.49. That brought us to a total cash of $6,278,678.35. Our expenditures this week were $2,243,715.78. And our undistributed tax claim is $9,1,523.44. That leaves us a balance of $4,43,439.13.
I make a motion to approve the treasurer's report, subject to audit.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the treasurer's report as presented. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Newlin.
Thank you. Have to mention the removal of the DHL item.
Oh, yes.
Actually, I announced that.
Yeah, thank you, Jamie. We had a workshop yesterday and there was a, in case we wanted to have an action on it today, we had it in our agenda with the proper notice. We are not ready to act on that, so we are going to wait for some additional information and probably consider it on the 1st of August. But we will remove it from the agenda as of right now.
And that was the DHL item that's listed on.
Yep. So, perfect timing. Just introduce yourself and then you may proceed.
Leanne Schneik, Deputy Director of Human Resources. Under resignations and terminations, I have Shannon McMinn, Senior Center Services Director Two at Area Agency on Aging, resignation effective July 19. Michael Debney, Volunteer Residential Coordinator One at Area Agency on Aging, resignation effective July 12. Lonnie Howard, Court Officer in the Courts, resignation effective July 12. Joy Barina, Full-Time Telecommunicator at Department of Emergency Services, resignation effective July 7th with the last working day of July 5. Devin Weaver, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, resignation effective July 11. Brenda Ginrich, DJ Office Support One at MDJ Wolf, resignation effective July 26th with the last working day of May 7. April Williams, Full-Time Office Support Two, Medical Secretary of Renova, resignation effective July 8th with the last working day of July 3. Donna Goodman, Casual Call LPN at Renova, resignation on to the last working day of June 29. And Keith Whitick, Full-Time Deputy Sheriff in the Sheriff's Office, resignation effective July 19.
Motion to approve those resignations, terminations.
I'll second the motion and special recognition to Lonnie Howard, who serves since 2005.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. My only comment is, as you can see or listen to it, that 100% of these are resignations. 20 years ago would be retirements and a couple resignations. It's just, because they're flipped with people's transitory inclinations, I guess. So anyway, any other comments? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Under leave of absences, I have Bonnie Betts from the Pathonatary's Office, up to a 12-week leave effective August 23rd, and Michael Wayman from the Pathonatary's Office, up to a 12-week leave effective July 12.
I make a motion to approve the leave of absences as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those LOAs. Any questions? Is there a question over there? No? No comments, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
No changes to status. I have Joel Torasanta, transfer from Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail to Full-Time Deputy Sheriff in the Sheriff's Office, at the rate of $19.94 an hour, effective July 22nd.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those transactions. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Other transactions, I have District Attorney's Office in Central Booking would like to hire Melody Calderon as a full-time booking agent at the rate of $15.09 an hour, effective July 22nd. President Judge Toawak in Domestic Relations would like to hire the following two individuals as Office Support Two at the rate of $1,131.44 biweekly, both effective on July 22nd, and that is Alexis Rayham and Jesse Guzman. The Sheriff's Office would like to hire Jared Musco as a Full-Time Deputy Sheriff at the rate of $19.94 an hour, effective July 22nd.
Make a motion to approve the other transactions as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those transactions. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all transactions previously read, plus the following. I have a salary increase for Michael to affect Chef Assistant Public Defender One in the Public Defender's Office at the rate of $2,684.92 biweekly, effective July 21st.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those salary board transactions. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have the alliance with us today. Jennifer, if you'd like to introduce your colleagues and then you may proceed.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Jennifer Busha, and I am speaking on behalf of Campbelltown Community Alliance, also known as CCA. We are neighbors working together to revitalize the village of Campbelltown. Joining me this morning are fellow CCA board members Jamie Miller and Stephanie Fogg. About three years ago, CCA applied for and was kindly awarded a $25,000 matching Marcellus Shale grant from the Lebanon County Commissioners to start a playground project at the Campbelltown Community Park. We then had to raise the matching funds of $25,000, which, thanks to local businesses in the community, was achieved in less than a year. The South Lebanon Dairy Township also received a local shares account grant for the playground in the amount of $70,616. This was what was needed to finalize the playground project in one phase and make it really special for the community. Planning for the playground project started in late fall of 2021. We have calculated that over 200-plus hours were put into the behind-the-scenes planning, which included writing the grant for CCA and assisting South Lebanon Dairy Township with their grant write-up, numerous fundraising activities at local establishments and online, township meetings, CCA board meetings, playground design and coordination with Willow Playworks and Eli Associates, along with the countless emails and phone calls to coordinate everything from funding, design, and execution. The Playground Community Build Project had so many wonderful sponsors that made this event special as well, which included donations of event-day t-shirts, food and beverages for all the volunteers, and landscaping equipment and manpower. We have found with all of our projects, especially this one, that we truly are living in a wonderful community and county. The Playground Community Build Day was scheduled and completed on Saturday, October 28th, 2023. It was a beautiful sunny day, and we had over 70 volunteers totaling approximately 560 manpower hours. After the curing of concrete and the installation of mulch, the playground was open for use a week later on Saturday, November 4th, 2023. This is such a great benefit for our small community. We want to sincerely thank the Lebanon County Commissioners for believing in us and granting us the initial funds to get started. Literally, this was the beginning of the Campbelltown Community Park Playground Project. Additionally, we want to pay respect to Bill Ames for his encouragement for CCA to apply for the grant. With lots of hard work, planning, and a wonderful community, we did it. Thank you. We're open to any questions that you have for us.
You did a good job.
Well, thank you for recognizing Commissioner Ames. I know this is important to him, and it's a beautiful playground, and it's, I think I can speak for my colleagues. It's easy to talk about a beautiful community because of people like you acting involved and making an impact.
I appreciate that.
So, thank you.
We appreciate it. And we have some photos, if anyone wants to see them, from the beginning to the end and all the volunteers that were involved. It was amazing how many people came out to help that day.
And Stephanie or Jamie, any comment that you'd like to add as volunteers?
As soon as the playground was ready and open, kids were lining up to play in the playground, and that really was really special to see that, that all our work was for those kids. And adults, too, they enjoyed it.
We do Marcellus Shale every two years because of the funding, and this is a perfect example of how that money is intended to be used. Would you like to just mention a couple of the sponsors, maybe that would encourage other communities to? Oh, there you go.
Nice and easy. So we have NK Graphics, who donated, donated all the t-shirts. Stuff Steak donated all the food and beverages for all the volunteers on the Community Build Day. And KK Longman Landscape had probably 30 of their men come, plus they also had a bunch of equipment that they brought to use for the playground.
Okay, that was an unplanned advertisement. Well, anything else that you'd like to add before you depart? Well, thank you for putting the money to good use.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
What's that? All right, so that's the end of the formal agenda for now.
Yeah, I have a few items to present. And then we can go to Board of Elections. First, I have exemption requests for eligible disabled veterans, exemption for real estate taxes. They are Lawrence Sherman of Woodland Estates, Lebanon, and Daniel Snyder of Cumberland Street, Lebanon.
Make a motion to approve the 100% disabled veterans for tax exemption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those exemptions. Any questions or comments? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Next, I have an application for a loss prevention grant from our property and general liability carrier, insurance carrier, Pennsylvania County Risk Pool, as I occasionally present. And as you're aware, we do have a grant available to us each year of $30,000 each policy year to make improvements or changes or anything relating to a risk, a defect, or something that will improve the safety or reduce our risk or loss. So, and the Safety Committee meets every month. We consider these projects, and then if approved at the Safety Committee meeting, we then pass them on, recommend it to the Board of Commissioners. This particular project is some sidewalk replacement at the MHIDEI building on Lehman Street, and we have four concrete pads that are cracked and lifted and just in general in disrepair and need to be replaced. They went about getting some estimates, and we would like to submit for a grant of $10,640 to P Corp for the replacement of these sidewalk pads, and we have worked with Keith Wentz, who's the Loss Control Coordinator with P Corp, and he's given us a good, positive indication. So.
Motion.
Make a motion to approve that application process.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that P Corp grant request. Any comments or questions regarding the motion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Okay, next, I have three, with three applications for the hotel tax grant, number 19, 20, and 21. They are from Ms. Morgan's Milkweed Antiques for a show that will be held at the Expo Center in October. They are from, also from Motorama Productions for a show that is held early in 2025, and from the Penn State Cooperative Extension for a seminar that they hold annually for recertification, I think might be a pesticide recertification, nutrient management and pesticide management certification. As you're all aware, the fund is down pretty low at this point. The amount of, the amount you have in requests exceeds the amount you have available. At the same time, I, and you've been talking about reconsidering the guidelines of these grants, and so I've given you each a draft of some guidelines that changes a bit, doesn't really change. It emphasizes more of a hotel reservation, hotel use for these events. So, it's up to you what you would like to do this morning with these. If you want to look over the guidelines, give me some feedback. We can come back to those on August 1st at the next meeting and possibly adopt those and have that be the standard. It's up to you at this point.
I'd like to consider tabling these till we do adopt the guidelines and build the fund up a little bit. That would be my inclination. We did talk a couple of months ago about, or I did, about reallocating the hotel tax percentages to give us a little bit more money to work with. And so, Visit Lebanon Valley has the lion's share of the percentage. They get 55% of the hotel tax. The Expo, with over 200 venues, is a great generator of hotel tax, gets about, or gets 35%, and then the county gets 10. So I was, in my reallocation thinking, was to move the Expo to 45%, the VLV to 40%, and the counties, for our consideration, up to 15%. BLV is sitting on a little over $1 million in cash. So there, this would not cause them to suffer, you know, in terms of their mission, but I thought, you know, since we've not done this for a couple of years, it would be worth looking at. So maybe with the guidelines and with considering reallocation, we can honor more of these or consider more of these, and that's kind of where I am with hotel tax and these grants.
If I may provide some feedback on the request, counties, the way I understood, and maybe things have changed, the counties are not really supposed to be delegating, collecting the fund and keeping them. They're supposed to be delegating them to tourist promotion agencies, and we would be, we have done what we're doing, and we have not been challenged, but I, at some point, if we exceed what we're doing, I'm afraid that the state may come in and shut us down on the program that we have set up.
So if we, we're doing something wrong, but if we exceed what we're doing wrong, you think we may get shut down?
I think that they have tolerated this, but if we try and get a larger percentage, I don't know that they're going to be as generous.
Well, I think if we're doing something wrong, we should stop doing it.
Okay, well, then that's fine, too.
But I want to verify that we're doing something wrong, not just take it on the face value of some feedback. So I want to make sure we're, you know, not allowed to do this.
Can we start there? Can you maybe look into that for us to make sure that our current policy?
I just remember that discussion when it was set up.
If we're doing something illegal, certainly we don't want to continue it. So, okay. And we'll, the other, are we okay with tabling these till we have some of these things resolved? Because I wouldn't want to consider these.
The motion, but yes.
Second.
Perfect. It's been moved and seconded that we table the requests and the guideline adoption till at least August 1st. Is there a?
I could just, if I could just say, I don't think that we are doing anything illegal. That's a seed that I don't really want planted.
Well.
It's worth it, but.
It was just planted. I mean, the question was right. I mean, I've been doing this all this time, and now I find out it's not, yeah. So, anyway, okay. I'd like to get some verification so I feel better about that. Anything else? Yes.
How often is the fund replenished? Okay.
As the money comes in, the treasurer's office.
Okay. So you really never know exactly, you know, you have a good year, you have a bad year in terms of hotel occupancy, that fund is going to fluctuate.
Most numbers have been pretty steady and actually go up. Pretty good. And there, and it used to be at 3%, and it's now 5%. So, when the legislature enacted or amended the hotel, the legislation, counties were able to increase it, and I think most, if not all, counties did go to that because it's really not a burden on the residents and the taxpayers of the county. It's a visitor, a visitor tax primarily.
I know Jennifer appreciates what we do with handling the review of the local requests. So, I guess it could still be a range, but I, I just would hate to get greedy and then have the state say we're not allowed to do it anymore.
We already have, yeah, we don't want to, you know, go over that murky water again. I, you know, just let's, our solicitor get some clarity. If we're breaking the law, let's stop doing it immediately. Okay. Oh, sorry, yes.
That's okay. I just was wondering, the short-term rentals, is that also included in the hotel tax collection?
Yes. Treasurer can.
Yes.
Okay.
So if you know any that aren't registered with us.
Yeah, that's, that's the.
I just didn't know if that fund went to the same.
It does. It's a same, short-term rental hotel.
Yep. Okay. All in favor of this motion to table these items, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Was that, are you opposed to?
You just went fast. That's all. I'm not opposed to tabling it.
All right. We have our election office, and so we will adjourn this meeting, and then we will begin convening the election board under Chairman.
Call this meeting of Lebanon County Board of Elections to order. And Sean Rusher, our director, I'll turn the agenda over to you, so you can walk us through the items you have to present.
Sure. Hopefully nothing too controversial today. Kick us off. We have a new ability. Excuse me.
Before you go, I forgot, we need to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Oh, yes, first.
They are attached to the agenda.
So moved.
I second the motion.
Second. Any questions, comments? Are those minutes, if not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Guys have it.
Are there any handouts for us?
Nope. Go ahead, ask the lady. You, Jen. You, Jen. Yeah. So, kick us off. We have tracking of mail ballot packages. We currently already do that with the outbound.
Again, Sean, I'm sorry. I guess we don't have it written on here, but we did ask for a couple of comments, assuming.
No, can we just have everyone introduce themselves?
Thank you.
Sean Rusher, Director.
You, I know.
Hi, Jen.
I am Joyce Carver.
My name is Amy Ross, and I work in.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment? Okay, now we proceed. Thank you.
So, as you know, we currently track outbound packages when we're mailing ballots. It's not perfect, but it gives us a pretty good idea of where things stand when we're tracking things for voters, if they want to know, where's my ballot? We know when we send it, now we know where it is. Is it at the warehouse, at the postal warehouse? Is it en route to their house? It helps a lot. What we haven't been able to do is track when the voter mails it back to us. That's now becoming available as of this fall election. It is at an added cost, but it's fairly small. For this fall election, it's going to cost approximately, it's about 10 cents a unit, so about $800. That would allow us the ability, when a voter calls in, to tell them, okay, we can see it in the postal flow, here's where it is. For the cost, I think it's a nice little window for reassurance for the voters. I think we should consider doing it. If we want to do it, we'd have to let them know now because it actually requires our ballots to go through a different set of equipment because it requires variable barcode tracking to do that. So we'd have to decide now for the fall. So I'd recommend, for that cost, I think it's a nice little bit of insurance for the voters.
I'll make a motion to approve the return tracking on the mail ballot.
Second motion, I do have a question. I may have drifted on. Did you mention 10 cents? So you're figuring 8,000?
Yep, about 8,000.
And what did we have in the last corresponding about? I mean, I'm just expecting this one to be a bigger turnout.
Right now, we are at what we were on Election Day before, and we are at that ahead of time. So we're trending up.
Okay. And, and so, the money, is this part of the grant?
It can absolutely be covered by the grant. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. Second item would be the ADA update. So every July, we recertify that we haven't changed any polling places. We're ADA compliant based on no changes from previous year. We're actually going on a deep dive this summer. We mentioned this back in May, where we're, we're going to every single polling place physically ourselves, and we're using a packet developed by the county, Dolphin County, that is phenomenal. It's very detailed. Joy did print one up. We, we're doing this right now, so this is all kind of breaking. But it involves going, measuring the slope of the parking spots, the ramps, measuring the angle and width of the ramps, things like that. So we're not just going on the polling places' word, we're going and measuring it ourselves. So it's slow. We were hoping to be done by mid-July, but frankly, it's just been so hot. We haven't been out in the field doing it as much as I thought we'd do it. We're a little less than halfway done, and with the break in the weather, we'll probably knock out another 10 or so by next week. So we're making some progress. If you would like to see examples of that, we did get those here ahead of time. We were just thinking, oh, we should print those out here, so we can email you an example of what one of those looks like, or Joy just printed some quick out here. My apologies for not having them in advance. So.
Do you have those for handouts?
If you'd like to see them. So right now, the report we sent to Department of State is a, just a spreadsheet that lists all the precincts, and it's checkbox. It's, yes, we've checked they have a ramp. Yes, the doors are wide enough. This is much more in-depth.
At this point, you're halfway through?
Yeah, a little less, but yeah. We'll have it done by the end of the summer. So the nice thing about doing an audit like this is if there, we would get audited by a spot check, and we showed that we had been proactive and found something, and we were in the process of making a fix, we wouldn't necessarily get named. So we just wanted to make sure we didn't have any surprises.
Thank you.
The next thing here is the nursing home update. That is where I'm visiting all the nursing homes. Katie Beckett is going out with me. She used to be a social director at Cornwall Manor. We're visiting nursing homes. We're taking all the paperwork, all the people at nursing would need to register to vote, get a mail-in ballot. We're walking through the legalities of one versus the other, making sure they know how to get to the polling place, that sort of thing. We had a good number of them. We have four still upcoming that are definitely on the agenda. We have another six that said they're interested. We just don't have a hard date yet. We're trying to work that out, and we've done five visits already, maybe six visits already. That seems to be going well. It's all very friendly. Every, it's been very good. Every place we've gone, they've said, this is wonderful, this is wonderful, so.
Sean, the, when you say all, we're visiting all nursing homes, all that except your invitation?
Correct.
That's the first hurdle?
Yeah.
Are you doing skilled and assisted living, or what's your definition?
I meant to say that, that, thank you. So when I say we have six visits, three of those are just in Lebanon Dairy Village, because we're hitting completely different areas of the village. And when we meet, we're meeting with the staff and with the residents. So depending on what level of care they're in, makes. So depending on what level of care they're in, makes the meeting very, very different.
It seems like a pretty high bar to say we're going to, because there's so many.
There's so many, yeah. By the end of the summer, I don't think we're going to hit everybody. I, I, we have a list that we developed and I thought I had all of them, but.
I think it's a great.
I keep finding more.
Great goal to, to have, okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you have any contacts out there, I'll take them. Sometimes it's just getting to the right person, sometimes it takes a month just to talk to the right person.
Yeah, I haven't applied anywhere, so.
Housing and redevelopment authority has a list that you, you don't want to compare lists, okay.
I maybe don't want to get you some help at the hospital, our social services department deals with those facilities all the time.
We can just see what you have versus what we have. I, yeah, I surprise how many smaller ones are floating around and I drive by and I didn't even know we're one street away from me, so. Yeah, great project.
Comment, not a question, but this, this very topic is one of the reasons why I'm not comfortable with no excuse mail-in ballots because people in nursing homes, some of them are sharp as a pack and others are struggling and it's very easy for somebody to, well, some people may be well-intentioned to help and assist someone to complete the application and actually complete their ballot, but as we know, that's illegal unless they have that documented and everything. So anyway, I'm glad you're doing this, that we're at least educating. Next thing, I don't know how we enforce it, but that's, that's why I'm.
A tact we're taking on the visits is we're taking a very firm legal stance on, and explaining that, what they can help with and what they can't. It is okay to help someone who's blind fill out the ballot, it's not okay to tell them who to vote for. You know, that's, it seems obvious, but people want to help. And we were also explaining to the nursing home staff how they can address this issue with families too. So they're comfortable explaining to the family the right way to do it and they always have us as a reference, so. Thank you, sure. And we're going to talk about precinct consolidation and we don't have a plan in place because this is a big, long process. Matt was going to help me talk about this today since you guys had asked about it.
That's good, so at the last meeting, it was discussed regarding what some of the steps are and I've begun to take a look at what is articulated in the election code as well as what is required in the case law with regard to the board taking action to consolidate precincts, to create new ones and to potentially take action to, you know, if, if there's a precinct that has more than the, the required number of voters to maybe create a new one in that particular township. So the election code, just giving a very brief overview, election code typically requires that, you know, action is approved by the board. So anything that will be filed with the court would have to be with the approval of the board first before I and Sean would file a petition. And then there are notice requirements, once the court sets a hearing, then, that it has to be posted in a conspicuous location. I believe it's five, five spots in a conspicuous location at each precinct that could be affected. So there are a lot of onerous notice requirements that go along with that. And then, then the court will hold a hearing on, on the consolidation or, you know, other action with regard to moving the boundary for a, a district and so on. And so that is something that Sean and I have begun the process of talking about at this point. Obviously, Sean and I are both in agreement, no, nothing should take place this year being it's a presidential election year. And, and also too, I know it was mentioned that, I believe this was something that was taken, this was action that was considered several years ago and Judge Klein had issued an order, so that's something that I'd want to take a look and see what Judge Klein has ruled relative to our county and the consolidation or reconfiguration of districts. So Sean and I are in the early stages of looking at it, we just wanted to provide the board with an update, nothing concrete as of right now. There won't be any action that's presented to the board until at least next year, the very earliest.
So your agenda item says consolidation, but you are considering also splits.
Yeah, so an interesting thing to come out of researching this is looking at statutes, it looks like we have some precincts that probably are candidates for splits as well as consolidation.
We really don't want, you know, the long lines if.
Right.
We see something obvious that we can deal with.
Wherever the data lead, wherever the data lead.
And, and the election code sets the parameters, the districts are not, they shouldn't have less than 100 registered voters and more than 1,200 registered voters. And, and that's something that has been in the election code now for, since it was last amended in 1999. And so that's something that Sean and I are going to be taking a look at. And, and then you can have precincts that have more than 1,200, but you have to show the court that there's good cause to have to keep it the way it is.
So in light of that window, there's clearly going to be some candidates to split, but.
Some are very limited options for a polling place.
That's, that is a factor, yep, yep.
Yes, thank you. I, I happen to be at the hearing with Judge Klein and my recollection is that we have to look at the whole, we can't just look at a couple of precincts. If we're going to do one section, in other words, a consolidation of small, we also have to look at the splitting of large. And we have some that are more than 3,000, so that's like almost, if not, three times the legal limit. So we do need to look at all of them.
Yeah. I, I think we're going to have some very good things come out of that. Unfortunately, it won't be cutting back on expense because for every one we consolidate, we're probably going to split one. But that's okay, we're just going in the right direction.
Has to be safe and secure.
That's kind of what drove the original effort back, I think it was around 2007 or '08, if I recall correctly, was the, some of the very small precincts that are in the city, the turnout is, you know, double-digit turnout. And, and, and we're putting poll workers and expense and all, all of that. So at that time, that was, I think what drove it was a lot of expense going into just a little bit of turnout. And as Fisher was noted, Judge Klein's ruling was, it was admirable that you want to look at that, but you can't just look at a few. You must look at the entire county.
And there are limited windows just in the election cycle to make this work efficiently for our office as well. So if we were to do it, if I could throw a dart at the calendar, it would be January 2026, maybe before the next committee meeting, elections. It would be at a time where I have a block of time where we could really put into this. It'd give us plenty of lead time for Matt to get it together for the courts. If we had to do it before that, we're going in municipal year, which I know is not a big voter turnout, but it is a lot of work for our office. I prefer to do it after that, all things being considered.
I like that plan.
All right, so those are the big things and I have a few general status updates for you. Joy's going to jump in here too. We are, we have been doing one of our big waves of data maintenance, our list maintenance program. We are always, I want to stress this, always doing list maintenance, always, every day, that's what the clerks do. But a few times a year, we have a big wave that comes through based on mailings that the state defines and that is right now, so.
Talking about list maintenance, the last two months has been very intensive. We have sent out 4,618 updates to voters who were cued by Eric that they may have moved. We get those notifications from the United States Postal Service and from Department of Transportation and then we follow up on them. We wait for responses. So we're, we have submitted our, our final letter to the voters who we are asking for verification and we have until August 7th to receive those letters back. On the list maintenance, I see you asked for some numbers. Deceased for 2024 is 645. Inactive voters is 8,440.
And what was that?
8,740.
Of inactive voters?
Inactive.
Yes, okay. And moves, I see you've indicated is 4,618.
So inactive doesn't mean canceled?
No.
There's a difference, I want to make that clear. Those, these people aren't being scrubbed from the books, the inactives, it just means they haven't voted in a couple of elections. And now we're keeping an eye on them.
Okay.
So if I may, what happens in the case of someone who you deem inactive? They get a letter, you ask for them to respond to the letter saying, I'm still here, just haven't voted.
Correct, and that they have, but they have two federal elections to do something, take an action to get in contact with us. After two federal elections, then they get another warning and then they're taken off the books.
It's usually a six-year process.
Six years.
So that inactive can be a little, but I know there are activist groups looking at that number and thinking that these are people who are bad voters. They're not, a lot of people just vote in presidentials, like, so it's once every four years. Those type of voters are the ones that'd be labeled inactive, there's nothing wrong with those accounts.
And as soon as they vote or respond to a letter, they're listed as active again.
I, I can't hear what you're saying.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, if you can move the microphone. When you're facing away from us, it's very difficult to hear.
We're talking about inactive voters, which has been questioned. As soon as a voter then votes again or responds to one of our letters where we ask for their address verification, they're listed as active again.
What was the nu, I'm sorry, what was the number of inactives, 8,000?
440.
8,000 or 800?
8,440. And that, that simply comes because not every voter votes in every one.
The majority of those are valid voters and will be automatically renewed as active.
You know, it would help me if you would present that to us in writing before a meeting for anything that you're presenting like this because it is hard to hear and I do have people ask me afterwards. And I know I can direct them to you, but the closer we get to the election, the busier you're going to get. So if I can, you're load, all I need is something as a referral.
Okay.
Okay? I would appreciate any information in advance of this meeting that I can have.
Sure, certainly.
Thank you.
All right, so that's been rolling along, we have a couple more weeks of, of the wave of work for that, but it's going very smoothly. The Department of State mandated mailing ballot material updates. I don't think there's any county that's happy with that right now in the middle of presidential, why they would have us be changing instructions and things like that. Now, we do a lot of our mailing materials on demand through a vendor. So we are hit like about half the state is on this particular issue. But a lot of the state, in order to keep costs down, buy everything in February or March for the year. They're going to have to trash most of that material and then rebuy the new instructions. The changes are inconsequential and they're out of our hands. Matt and I looked and looked and tried to find a way to get out of being forced to do this, we can't find a way to do it.
Yeah, the, I, this is a section where unfortunately, you know, most sections of the election code are rather ambiguous. This is one section of the election code where there is really no ambiguity and, and it doesn't indicate the form of the declaration and the envelope shall be as prescribed by the Secretary of the Commonwealth. And so basically, as, as Sean and I indicated, and we looked at other counties, this is something that we have to follow the Department of State's lead on.
So you'll see on your listserv, we're talking to other commissioners, that a lot of people are talking about the envelopes and changes that humanity envelopes. That is going to impact us, but not a whole lot because most of our stuff is on demand. What will hit us is the instructions, there is no way to modify or use a stamp or reprint the instructions. They're, they've changed the layout of them completely and basically it, that's just it, the layout, it's a real waste. But we're going to have to buy new instructions. So we bought at the beginning of the year upfront for the year our instructions and they, we can't use them now. So we're going to have to throw those away. We had some stock in-house, some stock at the vendor, pre-printed, those are going to be tossed and we're going to reprint, so just be aware of that. The envelopes, what you will see the other counties talking about is there is on the back of the envelope where it says, put your date. It's just a line, 20, and then two blocks where you put the year. They now want those envelopes printed with a line in 2024. So counties that can't afford to buy the new envelopes are exploring options, none of which have been approved by state even today yet. Where they're talking about using a hand stamper to go and stamp 24 on all the envelopes. They tried to reprint them, running them through print shops and they haven't been successful in getting everything to line up consistently. It's always just a little off, which makes voters understandably hesitant to trust it. So I think there's a pretty good chance a lot of counties are going to end up having to just buy their whole stock. But we are impacted, impacted by minimally. Just here aware, if you see, if you see that out there. And this is all over, this is just completely.
Yeah, this is, it's unfortunate what is happening at the Department of State and, and its effect that it's having on counties with regard to there being confusion on what is an appropriate envelope, as, you know, as counties are preparing to get everything ready for the fall election. And, and it's, it's at a cost to not just our county, but other counties as well.
And our pushback to state, there's nothing we can really do at this point, but our pushback to state is if you need to make a change, it needs to be a year in advance. But once we buy our materials, we buy our materials. So that is what I officially have. Before you go, I think there's a question that's on, could you identify for the record?
Do you have a question of what the cost will be for just our county to change this?
For our county, I'm guessing, I, I know for a fact we're going to be about $500 loss on the instructions, but I think that's going to be low. I think we're going to have to creep it up about $800. We are asking the state to give us permission to use envelopes that are in-house for over-the-counter voting. They've indicated they might allow us to do that, so that'll save us buying some materials. But anything that goes out in the mail is going to have to comply.
So $800 approximately in the instructions, but then the envelopes, you said we didn't purchase those already, so we're still in the.
We, we have some in-house, but we're hoping that they'll give us a variance that we can use those for over-the-counter voters only.
So if not, what's our cost for envelopes?
It'll just be buying the new envelopes, it would be.
But we have a bottom, so there's not a loss.
Yeah, we have a bottom, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Quick question. Getting back to what you said about voters getting.
Excuse me, before you ask, can you identify yourself for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Faith Fox. Sorry, I apologize.
About, sir.
No, sir. Identify yourself.
I'm Eric Allen Paul, the county troublemaker and bringer of mayhem. Real quick, about the nursing home voters. You had mentioned about the improprieties of telling them who to vote for as per, as opposed to showing them how to vote. Just have two real quick questions about that. One, how do you find out if that kind of abuse is occurring? And two, how do you use enforcement to make it stop?
If there is abuse of that, we just refer to the DA.
How do you find out though?
How do we find out? That's just reported, because there's no way for us to piece what happens behind the closed bedroom door. It's, it's tough, like this, this is a tough gray area that we've, the best thing we can do is try to be proactive and get out and talk to the staff. And I, I, we're not threatening anybody, but we are explaining this is, you have to be in compliance with the federal law, be aware that this could violate a federal law.
If it does, what are the consequences?
And that is.
People that are perpetrating the illegality.
That is up to peer, that's a peer question, not a question. The DA, the DA, I'm sorry.
The DA?
Yeah.
I know she's being very serious though.
What, what she does?
Yeah.
Malcolm McLean, I'm a actually retired geriatrician nursing home physician. And I'll sort of ask a leading question, who in the nursing homes is in fact delegated to assist or help with that?
Not a leading question, that's a, that's a great question. So in, from, there's the nursing home angle of that, but there's a voter angle, I'll answer the voter angle of that. And that is, a voter can ask anybody to help them with their ballot. But there are certain people that explicitly by law, explicit by law, that aren't allowed help, and I'm one of them, there's not many. It's me or the 60 judges of election in the county. I don't know about candidates, I'm assuming candidates, I probably should know that.
No, candidates shouldn't.
But the, nerd, within the nursing home, it's whoever the resident requests to help. They, they can ask whoever they want. And if you were to go to vote in person and had to be holding the pen or seeing the ballot, you could literally ask anybody, even a stranger lying next to you for help if you wanted to. Now, there's a form you fill out at, at the location, but, and, and there is a form you fill out when you, on your ballot, mailing materials back. Because if I assisted this person, you get, you get your name and signature, but yeah, they can ask whoever they want. There's not like a designated social worker or something. It's just not within the law. What, what, so, but, but as you go out.
What, so, but, but as you go out and educate, who typically helps and who are you educating?
So the.
The social services or somebody like that?
Right, there's a social director, there's a, there's a facility director and there's social directors within the nursing home and they're generally all meeting with us when we're meeting with the residents. And overwhelmingly, they're the ones that are asking us all the questions and we want to get this right, we want to get this right. So it, it's been fruitful. It also shows that there is a necessary but frustrating gray area in the law here that it's hard to figure out.
I want to take that up with the DA and legislature and perhaps curtail some of these loopholes, make it safe for voters to not manipulate.
If you, in the last election, presidential election.
Move on. I, there is probably one that reminds me, there is a form that you can have your name removed from the books. And I do take it with us to these presentations specifically because we have had spouses that have had concerns about their husband or wife being in the home and they say they simply don't know what's going on anymore. I want to make sure they can vote. There is a form for that, but that, that requires the family to go through that form and get it signed and that's like taking a license from somebody. It's, it can be messy, but that's on the family. But when we go into nursing homes for the presentations, I take those forms with me. I explain it to the directors there and I leave it for them and I encourage them, if they have someone checking into a facility that is saying they no longer have the ability to vote or make decisions for themselves, that they and the family should consider this form and I encourage them to use it. We'll see on the way back.
Did you, I believe that the chairman asked for your name.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Karen Wolf and I'm Eric Paul's fiancee. And I've been taking more interest in my government state. Just keeping an eye on, why don't you get a little bit more active than I've been over many years I've lived in this town.
Now, I, I just wanted to mention, we didn't have it on the agenda, but you'll be getting some grant paperwork from me in the next 24 hours. It just needs a signature. It's some closeout reporting. Mike, it will go to you, but we need to have at least two signatures on it. I'd hope to have it done by today, but it's labor laborious. And the final thing, we had something that came in literally 30 minutes ago, that, well, 30 minutes before the meeting started that I wanted to share. Do you recall, we had the gentleman come in and talked about confidential voting and it was primarily focused on abused spouses and the situation where people might, might need their confidentiality, confidentiality, they didn't want their, their address advertised. Well, we have a update to that where anybody that you may know that would fall into these categories, we could get them some confidentiality when they're voting and that would be peace officers, correctional employees, any officers of the court, state prosecutors, any investigators, of course, protection of abuse orders and stalking and the other ones we had already covered. So if there is anybody in the county that would need their address protected, we can add that into the list too. We just got that paperwork.
Is that the result of legislation?
I don't yet know why. We just got this out of the blue, but I like that we have it.
Who signed it?
From state. That's what I have for you.
Sean, going back to the ADA, so far you've done about half the precincts. Have you found problems at any of them? So what kind of problems are you finding that need to be corrected?
I was expecting to find problems and we are pleasantly surprised that things are very good overall. If there, what problem is kind of a loaded term. There are, there are, there is like a, like a single situation I can think of where we're probably going to have to make a correction and we don't have to move the precinct or anything, we just have to put a few traffic cones out. There are, in handicap spots, there is a statute that says you have to have a sign that says van accessible. It can't just be a handicap spot. So we'll have to, as a result of this study, probably purchase a few van accessible signs that we provide the polling place to, for that day. So very small dollar, easy fixes so far.
And you also mentioned, so about the grant paperwork, is that the election theory grant paperwork?
Yes.
And where does that, can you refresh, how much did Land Derry County get and where does that stand here going into this current election?
So we are fully expecting to get that grant renewed, although there's been a lot less chat about it this year, but we're expecting to have that renewed. It'll be about 470,000 we should have coming in. They haven't released the numbers yet.
That would be for the new grant?
For the new grant and that's about what we got before.
Right. Where do you stand right now with, during the paperwork for year end?
I have everything except one thing. I want to make sure we have one invoice account and for everything else and it's on the list. But yeah, it's about done. I just need to transfer it all into the final reports and then get it over here. It's, we have time.
Did you know where you're, like how much, approximately?
I don't, I don't understand the question.
How much, how much do you use? How much do you use?
Oh, 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 oh.
A wrap from your last question.
We used 370,000.
With one bill still pending?
Yep, with, it's a bill still out. It's, don't hold me that exact number, that's about what I got.
Thank you.
Sure.
Sean, anything additional? Anyone else, anything for the good of the order? entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
He is adjourned, thank you all.